Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis. Sete, ocho, nueve, veinte, catorce, quince. La, 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 la. La, 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 la. En un cerro, tengo un chaleco. En un cerro, ¿qué piensas de eso? La, 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 la. La, 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 la. Adiós amigos, adiós mis amigos. Hasta la vista, hasta nos veremos. La, 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 la. Una pata de manzana, hay un pajarito. Un pajarito que siempre son siempre cantasí. Chiruli, 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 chiruli. Canta el pajarito, canta siempre cantasí. Una pata de manzana, hay un pajarito. Un pajarito que siempre son siempre cantasí. Chiruli, 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 chiruli. Canta el pajarito, canta siempre cantasí.
Nuestra siguiente canción es una canción de chulín de África. Nuestra segunda presentación se divertirá en relación con la canción.
¡Culir, culir, culir, culir! Culir, 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 culir. Culir, 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 culir. Culir, 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 culir. Por la fuerza del león. 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 Culir, 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 culir. Culir, 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 culir. Culir, 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 culir. Culir, 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 culir. Por la fuerza del león. Por la fuerza del león. Por la fuerza del león. Por la fuerza del león.
Nuestra siguiente canción se llama "Ida y Eva" y es una canción de África para estudiantes de segundo grado usando percusión. Nuestra siguiente canción se llama "A Piso de A Minero" de Timothy Brophy. Nuestro guitarrista soloista en esta canción es Jason Carter. Nuestra siguiente canción es una canción de folk de árabe llamada "Ida y Eva".
Idá y Eva, idá y Eva. Idá y Eva, mi amor. No hay nada, no hay nada mejor. Mejor que el viento. Idá y Eva, idá y Eva. Idá y Eva, mi amor. No hay nada, no hay nada mejor. Mejor que el viento.
Nuestra siguiente canción es una canción alemana de Beethoven. Beethoven comenzó a escribir en sus huellas y se suicidó cuando escribió su "Ninguna". Ahora hará "Oh, de joyo".
Vamos a cantar en un coro. Haz tu voz para el cielo. Ayuden a la invención. Manten los corazones altos. Amor, amistad, cuiden de los demás, cuiden del mundo y manténganlo libre. Vengan juntos, canten juntos como una familia. Vayan a cantar en un coro. Haz tu corazón hacia el cielo. Ayuden a la invención. Manten los corazones altos. Amor, amistad, cuiden de los demás, cuiden del mundo y manténganlo libre. Vengan juntos, canten juntos como una familia.
Nuestra siguiente canción se llama "Dundite" y es una canción de Israel. Esta canción se divertirá con violon solo tocado por Ivan Jones.
El país de Israel es un pueblo. Somos un pueblo, un pueblo. Los niños son los mejores. La fuerza nos da la paz.
Dundite, 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 muere. Dundite, 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 muere. Dundite, 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 muere. Dundite, 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 muere.
El pueblo es un pueblo. Somos un pueblo, un pueblo. Los niños son los mejores. La fuerza nos da la paz.
Dundite, 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 muere. Dundite, 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 muere. Dundite, 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 muere. Dundite, 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 muere.
Gracias. Esa canción también se divertirá con nuestro guitarrista Willie Rose Bellisle y Courtney Dunn. Siguiente es una canción estadounidense de los años 50 que fue famosa por Danny y los Juniors. Esta canción es "Rock and Roll is Here to Stay" y los soloistas son Autumn Barrett, Kaylee Gay, Jaden Gillingham, Teagan Jackson y Courtney Dunn.
No nos importa lo que dicen las personas. Rock and roll is here to stay.
Rock and roll is here to stay and it will never die. Era destinado a ser así, aunque no sé por qué. No me importa lo que dicen las personas. Rock and roll is here to stay.
No nos importa lo que dicen las personas. Rock and roll is here to stay. Todo el mundo rock, amo rock and roll. 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 Mami. Todo el mundo rock and roll. Todo el mundo rock and roll. Rock and roll is here to stay. Rock and roll is here to stay. Todo el mundo rock, amo rock and roll. 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 Mami. Todo el mundo rock and roll. Si no te gusta rock and roll, cantarás lo que vas a perder. Si te gusta rock and roll, camina y escucha. No me importa lo que dicen las personas. Todo el mundo rock and roll. No nos importa lo que dicen las personas. Rock and roll is here to stay. Todo el mundo rock, amo rock and roll. 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 Mami. Todo el mundo rock and roll. No nos importa lo que dicen las personas. Rock and roll is here to stay.
Nuestra siguiente canción es una canción folk de Estados Unidos llamada "Cripple Creek". La sección de fiddle se divertirá con Ivan Jones y Austin Hickman.
Johnny's got a gal at the head of the creek. Goes up to see her by the middle of the week. Just like an apple from my tree. Sweetest little gal you ever did see.
Going up Cripple Creek, going in a run. Going up Cripple Creek to have a little fun. Going up Cripple Creek, going in a whirl. Going up Cripple Creek to see his girl.
Cripple Creek's wide and Cripple Creek's deep. He'll wake Cripple Creek before he sleeps. Rolls up his britches to his knees. He'll wake Cripple Creek whenever he pleases.
Going up Cripple Creek, going in a run. Going up Cripple Creek to have a little fun. Going up Cripple Creek, going in a whirl. Going up Cripple Creek to see his girl.
Halfway there he stops to rest. Thinks about the girl that he loves best. Picks him a watermelon fresh off the vine. Spit in him, she sure do feel fine.
Going up Cripple Creek, going in a run. Going up Cripple Creek to have a little fun. Going up Cripple Creek, going in a whirl. Going up Cripple Creek to see his girl.
Gracias. Nuestro guitarrista soloista son Jaden Gillingham, Courtney Dunn, Kaylee Rhodes y Teagan Jackson. Ahora vamos a cantar una canción de fiddle llamada "Thorn Dance". Nuestra siguiente canción es una canción de Estados Unidos arrancada por Hoodie Ledbetter. Esta es "Rock Island Line".
Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Si quieres ir a la maravilla, la maravilla es buena. Si la llevas al estacion para la Rock Island Line. Si quieres ir a la maravilla, la maravilla es buena. Si quieres ir a la maravilla, la maravilla es buena. Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Si quieres ir a la maravilla, la maravilla es buena. Si la llevas al estacion para la Rock Island Line. Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Si quieres ir a la maravilla, la maravilla es buena. Si la llevas al estacion para la Rock Island Line.
A, B, C, X, Y, Z. Cansan el cover, pero no se les ve.
Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Yo digo Rock Island Line es una maravilla. Si quieres ir a la maravilla, la maravilla es buena. Si la llevas al estacion para la Rock Island Line.
La última canción es una canción considerada la canción de la canción de la música de África. Fue famosa por Austin Hickman y Jonathan. Esta canción se llama "Rocky Top" y se divertirá con Austin Hickman y Ivan Jones.
Quisiera que fuera en una Rocky Top. Down in the Tennessee Hills. No hay dinero, no hay plata. Rocky Top, no hay telas de papeles. Una vez conocí una chica. Rocky Top, tuvo su propia natación. La chica era dulce, dulce, dulce. Tuvo sueños de ella. Rocky Top, siempre será. Oh, dulce para mí. Bueno, Rocky Top. Rocky Top, Tennessee. Rocky Top, Tennessee. Rocky Top, Tennessee.
Muchas gracias. Nuevamente somos de Pine Wood Elementary School, que está en la zona de Minnesot. Y volveremos una vez comience la reunión de la Consecha.
La reunión de la Consecha comenzará en unos 15 minutos.
Bien, historia de mi vida, todos. Debe relater más que nunca. Buenas tardes, todos. Cuando abro mi script, quiero decir primero que estoy emocionada de ver a tantas personas en esta reunión de la Consecha. Honestamente, no puedo decirte el número de veces que hemos... Honestly, I can't tell you the number of times we have come into a board meeting, and there are literally a handful of people here. So, first thing I'm going to do is applaud all of you for being here tonight. So, thank you. So, this is the school board meeting for April 14th, 2015, which is now in session. Pam, roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Present.
Mrs. Belford.
Here.
Mrs. Henderson.
Here.
Mrs. Neese.
Here.
And Mr. Ziegler.
Present.
At this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for two members of our BPS family who recently passed away. Second grade student Lacey Ann McCarty and first grade student Philip Monroe McCarty. Our thoughts are with their families, friends, and classmates during this very difficult time. Thank you. This evening, we have two students from Pine Wood Elementary School to assist us in the opening exercises. Jaden Gillingham, 6th grade, will present the invocation, followed by Jace Carter, 6th grade, who will lead us in the pledge. So, Jaden? Jaden, will you pull up the microphone? And you'll begin with the invocation.
One of my favorite quotes is by Abraham Lincoln. He says, "Character is like a tree and reputation is like a shadow. The shadow is what we think of it; the tree is the real thing." To me, this means your character is the person that you want to see. My mom and dad have taught me to remember it. If I don't want it on the front page of the newspaper, I shouldn't do or say it. I think this is good advice when I try to use it throughout everyday life.
Thank you, Jaden. I try to use that advice, too. Doesn't always work. Okay, Jace? Will you lead us in the pledge?
Please stand for the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Jace, since you're up at the microphone, we're going to start with you. And would you please tell the board and the audience a little bit about yourself?
My name is Jace Carter. I'm a starting forward for the Bavard Bulls. I do strings, guitar, orf, and an NEHS for Pine Wood Elementary. I...
Are you a 6th grade student at Pine Wood?
Yes, ma'am.
And how long have you been at Pine Wood?
Two years.
Two years. And what do you think of Pine Wood Elementary?
It's good. Teachers are very nice.
And what have been the best things that you've learned about Pine Wood?
Be who you are.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Be who you are.
Be who you are. Very nice. Okay. A lot of times, we like to ask students if there's something that you could change about your school. What would that be?
Sports activities.
Somehow, it doesn't surprise me with you. You'd like more sports activities?
Yes, ma'am.
Which ones would you like to see?
Basketball and football.
Basketball and football. So, okay. Well, you hear that, Dr. Bingley? We'll add that to our list. More sports at Pine Wood Elementary? The parting gift, yes. Do you have family with you here tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you ask them to please stand and introduce them? Or wave to us if they're in the back?
My mom, my dad, my grandma, and Miss Sylvia.
Well, thank you, family, for being here tonight. You have a very nice young man. Okay, then let's talk to...
Oh, and my little brother.
Oh, little brother. Somebody feels neglected. Little brother over here. Okay, so then that brings up Jaden. And Jaden, would you tell the board and the audience a little bit about yourself?
Well, I'm in 6th grade at Pine Wood, and I love my school. But I'm in NEHS, student council, I'm a safety patrol, I am a news crew, and I'm an orf, I'm in chorus.
So, when do you have free time? Okay. And I also see when you're not in school, you're in something called Keegan Performance Company. Now, what's that?
It's a dance team, and I dance for Keegan Performance Company.
So, it sounds like you are a very busy young lady. So, have you been at Pine Wood a long time?
Yes, I've been there since pre-K.
Wonderful. So, you can tell us a lot about Pine Wood and some of the things that you'll remember fondly when you leave. What's some of your favorite memories?
I remember, well, I've always loved school, so I just have a lot of memories, but I just love everything about school.
Aw, I guess that's always good to hear. So, if you could change something?
I think that we should have clubs on weekends, so we would be able to meet and...
So, as if you didn't have enough to do during the week, you want to come back on the weekends and do more clubs? Okay. So, do you have family with you tonight?
Yes.
So, is there anyone here first? Make sure we don't...
No.
Okay. Make sure we don't neglect any siblings. Will you introduce your family to us?
My mom.
Well, Mom, please stand. There's Mom. Thank you, Mom, for being here. Well, Jaden and Jace, it has been wonderful getting to know both of you. Would you please join your classmates again? And prior to the board meeting, we have had the pleasure of listening to the Pine Wood Performing Panthers under the direction of Darcy Halloran, music director. We look forward to having the students perform one additional number.
Thank you. Our selection we will perform is "Rocky Top." It was made famous by the Osmonds and is one of Tennessee's top 10 state songs. This song is called "Rocky Top," and we will feature Austin Hickman and Ivan Jones on the front.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. It is such a pleasure to work with the students at Pine Wood, and I'm really proud of their hard work this year. Thank you so much for having us.
Okay, thank you to Pine Wood. We're going to take a short recess so the children can gather their belongings.
Tonight's regular board meeting will begin airing live on Bright House Networks 496 in two minutes.
Thank you. I have never missed, and this is the one time I have to miss. So, it's really... Yeah. Actually, that's what I'm going for. But it was scheduled six months ago, and this wasn't on the agenda then. I didn't know.
Will begin in one minute.
Okay, one-minute warning out there. Can we have staff take care of these chairs up here, please?
Then the board meeting will resume in 10 seconds. Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Welcome back. I would ask, as people come into the meeting, if they would please quiet down. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Bingley.
Thank you, Ms. Neese, members of the board. On this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, four recognition items, one resolution proclamation, two presentations, 45 consent items, one action item, and eight information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Administrative staff recommendations were added, and there is a consent revision, item F-16, on student expulsions, as well as a consent addition, item F-28, on job description, exceptional student education. Also, there are three information additions. Item H-62 on personnel allocations, 2015, 2016. Item H-63 on departmental reorganization plans, capital, and item H-64 on departmental...
Okay, Dr. Bingley? Okay, I'm only going to say this one time. As I said in the paper today, I welcome any and all people at this meeting. But this is a meeting of the board and the public. If we cannot conduct this business meeting over the noise of the audience, this meeting will be adjourned. The audience will be cleared, and we will not come back in to do our meeting until the audience can be quiet. So, I welcome your attendance. I welcome your participation. But we cannot conduct our business meeting over shouting and cheering and yelling. Okay, continue, Dr. Bingley.
Okay. Item H-63 on departmental reorganization plans, capital, and item 64 on departmental reorganization plans, operating. I would also like to ask for the board to consider moving the recognition item for the school board art show ahead of the administrative staff recommendations due to the large number of students that are being recognized this evening.
Okay. And before I ask for a motion, Mr. Beislin, I think you also wanted to add on to our agenda today?
Yes, ma'am. I'd request that you add on to your agenda at the board member report portion. Four items. One is to approve the superintendent search timeline. Two, approve the advertisement and various publications of the superintendent search. Three, approve the superintendent salary range. And four, approve the compensation, I mean, the composition of the ad hoc superintendent search committee.
Isn't that advisory committee?
Same thing.
Okay. Okay, so just to review, we're adding, very last minute, the timeline for the superintendent search, the salary range, the compensation, the... Composition of the advisory committee.
Yeah.
Oh, and the ads.
And the advertisement.
And the advertisements.
Advertisement and various publications.
Okay. And I think each board member did have the opportunity to meet with the firm this afternoon? Just looking at all of you? Okay, so now, do I have a motion to adopt the April 14th, 2015, school board meeting agenda with all of its revisions as noted?
To approve.
Second.
Okay, motion is made to approve by Mrs. Henderson, seconded by Mr. Craig. Is there any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's proceed with the recognition item. Dr. Bingley.
Thank you, Ms. Neese. Item B-10 is to present the annual K-12 School Board Art Show Awards. Item B-10 is to present the annual K-12 School Board Art Show Awards. Ms. Cindy Van Meter, the Associate Superintendent of the Division of Curriculum Instruction, will make the introductions.
Good evening, Ms. Nisi, school board members, Dr. Bingley. The school board art show is an annual kindergarten through 12th grade event for Brevard Public Schools in which every school is invited to participate. Student artwork is submitted by art teachers and judged by selected artists, art educators, and supporters of arts in our community. The show runs through Wednesday of this week and is open to the public. Award-winning artwork will be displayed in the lobby area through April 30th. Please feel free to walk through the show, which is in the training rooms adjacent to the boardroom, and see the excellent artwork from our Brevard students. Ms. Bridget Geiger, our K-12 Visual Arts Resource Teacher and School Board Art Show Coordinator, will now present her recognition and awards. Bridget?
Thank you, Ms. Van Meter, and thank you, Dr. Bingley, school board members, and guests in attendance this evening for your continued support of Brevard Public Schools' outstanding art programs. We are indeed fortunate to have quality art programs in our schools in which students have many opportunities to explore and express their creativity in a safe, risk-taking environment. Quality visual arts programs are not about painting by number, coloring handouts, assembling craft kits, copying published photos, or mass-producing images from pre-designed patterns. Instead, they focus on studies and applications of skills, techniques, and processes, the elements and principles of design, art history, global connections, visual communication, and technology for the future. These areas of study and concepts help students develop and enrich the critical thinking, problem-solving, and innovation they will need to be successful in all areas of their lives during the 21st century. Art teachers design lessons that align with standards and integrate with core subjects. The selected artwork on exhibit next door showcases some of the very best of our students' creative efforts and talents. The art show was judged by representatives from Brevard Public Schools, the Brevard Schools' Foundation, Brevard Cultural Alliance, professional local artists and art educators, and I'd like to thank them for volunteering their time to come out to the exhibit last Thursday and spend several hours closely looking at the work and reading the artist's statements. They were amazed by the quality of work in this exhibit of almost 400 works of art from K-12 students and had a very difficult time selecting the winners. And now it is time to recognize the award-winning student artist of the evening. Will Dr. Bingley and our school board chair, Ms. Amy Nisi, please come down to the front and help present the awards? And Ms. Lee Taylor, member of our school board art exhibit team and Sable Elementary art teacher, is going to help pass out the certificates. We are going to begin with the cover design award. Let me call attention to the 2015 School Board Art Show program cover. We were handing those out in the exhibit area next door, and each student who participated in this exhibit, each art teacher will get one. Every year, students can submit illustrations to be considered for the school board art show cover design, and there were 11 entries submitted by middle school students this year. The winning design is titled Larry the Lion. He looks like a Larry, doesn't he? And it's a scratchboard illustration created by Kylie Fowler, an eighth-grade student of art teacher Marissa Flint at Edgewood Junior/Senior High School. The original illustration is on display next door in the exhibit. Will Kylie please come forward? We are going to present her with a certificate, a palette lapel pen, and she will receive a $25 gift card from our art show presenting sponsor, Target, along with a certificate. And if you, if any of you know what scratchboard art is, it's very unforgiving. It's drawing in reverse, so to speak, and you make a mistake, you can't fix it. So it's a beautiful piece, Kylie. Thank you. All right, now we're going to recognize all our other recipients. Will the first row please stand up? We are going to begin with our young students on this end. This is a special recognition award for kindergarten. First student is Racelyn McHatten. Did I say that right? Around the corner, there you go. From Roosevelt Elementary. Alyssa Denny from Pinewood Elementary. Skylar Kumblek-Braun from Lewis Carroll Elementary. Julian Herreraus from Odyssey Prep Academy in first grade. Caleb Gilchrist from Pinewood Elementary in first grade. Jonathan Camp from Mims Elementary, first grade. Delilah Cooper from West Melbourne School of Science Elementary, first grade. Anna Lee Coeston, Krista McAuliffe Elementary, in second grade. Maria Thering from Robert Louis Stevenson School of the Arts. We start the next row. Maria? We're almost done with all the special recognition. Maria, is Maria here?
Maria's up there.
Maria's up there, I'm sorry. Alexis Stewart from Audubon, I apologize. And Megan Vu from Meadow Lane Primary Elementary. And these are our special recognition winners from K through second grade. Thank you. You've come back to your seats, sit down. They've done a really good job being patient with all this. Okay, our next category is going to be for grades three through four. So will the next group of students stand up? Our first award winner is for first place 2D in grades three through four, Hannah Kirksmar from Audubon Elementary. Second place 2D award, Emma Aiken from Sunrise Elementary. Third place 2D award, Jason Barnhart from University Park Elementary. Okay, we're going to go to first place 3D award, Lillian Cook from Sculptor Charter Second place 3D award, Danielle Carlo from Harbor City Elementary. And third place 3D award, Dia Patel from Palm Bay Academy. And these are our third through fourth grade winners. Thank you. And now for our fifth and sixth grade winners. First place, Ada Marrero from Spessard-Holland Elementary. Second place 2D award, Alexis Univer from Suntree Elementary. Third place 2D award, Anthony Lucker from Port Malabar Elementary. First place 3D award is Maddie Calvert from Manatee Elementary. Second place 3D, Kristen Nguyen from Dr. W.J. Creel Elementary. Nguyen? Christina? Yes. And third place 3D is Kai McAllister from Myla Elementary. And Ms. Tricia Odette Henderson is going to accept Kai's award. And this is our fifth and sixth grade winners. For seventh through eighth grade, this is our middle school category. First place 2D award, Brittany Barron from Southwest Middle School. Second place 2D award, Hunter Holliday from Stone Magnet Middle School. Third place 2D award, Leah Ranin from Edgewood Junior/Senior High School. First place 3D award, Brett Neal from McNair Magnet Middle School. Second place 3D award, Billy Castillo from Sculptor Charter School. Third place 3D award, Tiffany Gray from Madison Middle School. And these are our middle school award winners. Now to the senior high level. Senior high is divided into four categories. We have a digital photography, 2D, 3D, and a ceramics category. So we're going to start with the digital art and photography. First place goes to Janel Robison from Merritt Island High School. I'm sorry. Second place goes to Elizabeth Minner from Merritt Island High School. And our third place winner is Jackie Azadou from Heritage High School. I don't know if Jackie's here tonight, but let's give her a applause. First place 2D is for Caitlin Hill from Space Coast Junior/Senior High School. Second place 2D, Christopher Romeda from Titusville High School. And third place 2D is Hector Roman from Rockledge High School. First place 3D, Aura Martinez from Melbourne High School. And our second and third place winners, second place 3D, Crystal Phillips. And third place 3D, Brianna Zimmerman. They were unable to make it. So we're going to move to the ceramics category. First place ceramics, Savannah Cruz from Merritt Island High School. Third place ceramics, Evan Hall from Viera High School. And these are our senior high category winners. Thank you. Now we're moving on to the big, big awards. Our Best of Show and our Purchase Awards. The Best of Shows are selected by grade level. We have a Best of Show for elementary, one for middle, and one for high school, and the same way with our Purchase Awards. We'll start with the Best of Show for elementary is Haley Smith from Indie Atlantic Elementary. Best of Show for middle school, Timothy Simonson from Sculptor Charter School. And Best of Show for high school, Gianna Santucci from Merritt Island High School. And they will be receiving a $50 gift card to Michael's Arts and Crafts and a sketchbook a little bit later. All their artwork is returned to the students through their art teachers at school later this week, so they'll also be receiving their ribbons and their artwork back. All right, let's go on to the Purchase Awards. The Purchase Awards are sponsored through the Brevard Schools Foundation, and what this is, is we select artwork that becomes part of a permanent collection here at the ESF building. And so these pieces are going to be purchased from the student. They receive an award for their artwork, and we will get their artwork framed, ready to go for a professional look, and they'll either be in the lobby area here, in one of the main offices, for all to see and enjoy. So our Purchase Award for elementary and a $50 gift, or a $50 cash award they'll receive later this week from Hunter Haskins at Audubon Elementary. Our Purchase Award for middle school is Leah Ranin from Edgewood Junior/Senior High, and she wins $100. And our Purchase Award for high school is Abby Camacho from Viera High School for $200. And I want to thank everyone here that supports our arts education programs. We have some wonderful creative talent in Brevard County. Thank you again.